Am I allowed to use the Montre Wi-Fi?
Montre guest.
Montre guest, okay, this is Montre. Oh, TOM, that's what TOM guest is.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's.
And then the password is Montre with a capital M and 2020.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hey, how are you?
You sit anywhere.
I think so, yeah.
We're good, are you?
We're good.
You, you can sit anywhere.
You might?
I am.
Hey, Julie Schell.
Julie, nice to meet you.
Give me a, I thought we hadn't met before, but we have.
Clay, Clay, hi, Mike, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Julie, I made that change to the minutes.
Oh, did you find?
I did, I did read, because I actually had to change what the sign ordinance said a little bit.
Yep.
And I fixed the zoning ordinance thing where it said Chair, they're waiting on the resolution in the lodge situation.
Yes.
So I made two changes.
Okay, super, so will you, how do you want to address that during the meeting? Will we get to there?
So when we get there, ask me to read what I changed it to you?
Okay.
And then you can accept it.
Okay, that sounds good, and I've got some other slight, small touch amendments too, so well, yep.
So you were in charge of refreshments?
I'm sorry?
You were in charge of refreshments?
No, just late breakfast. You're welcome to help on if you want.
No, thank you. That's the one thing I think is missing in this whole process is there's not a coffee pot sitting in the corner.
Yeah, that would be nice. I didn't do it today, but sometimes I go to the Huckleberry and grab, yeah, grab a coffee there. Had to be more organized for something like that to happen.
So what I think happened is Monday minute taking software is AI.
Mm-hmm.
So if you kind of talk over one another a little bit and like.
It gets confused.
Yeah.
I totally, we are going to be really diligent with the microphones and everybody's good about taking turns, but sometimes we get.
You get excited.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was thinking.
The scary thing about the voice recognition and all, you know, just how, you don't sound the way you think you sound.
Yes.
You realize how many uhs and, you know, and stutters and everything else.
That's punishment, to listen to my voice on.
Yes, I don't like to do that.
Okay, so I'm new here and I noticed that you two have your computers open, so I figure I'll open them.
Well, I don't like to look around a copy of the comprehensive plan, so I look at it on the town site, which means that I had to get the Wi-Fi password from Angie.
Well, that's what I just tried, Angie, and I couldn't get it to work.
TOM.
TOM guest.
TOM guest?
That's the, that's the one you should sign into.
That's the password or no?
No, no, that's.
That's the one you should sign in.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, Montre, capital M, 2020.
Well, who's Tom?
That's Town of Montre.
Town of Montre.
Just kidding.
We hate the internet, Tom, we have her.
What is the password again, I'm sorry?
Capital M for Montre, 2020, Montre 2020.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning.
I need a calendar, don't I, Julie? You're sitting in a meeting, Julie?
Oh, yes, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about signs, subcommittee, we are looking at the first of the afternoon and the first of the eighth, if there's a room available.
I think so, we are.
Thank you. No, you can take wherever you want. Yeah, welcome, Eleanor.
What? What? Eleanor.
Julie. And this is Mike.
Mike.
Eleanor.
Eleanor.
Hi, Eleanor.
I almost, I almost thought about that. I was almost like, you know, it would be, yeah. Until everybody knows everybody.
I think we need name tokens.
We've lost our fearless leader.
Yes. Yep, so we'll be, and we also have some.
Capital M.
Subcommittee meetings, we have lots of.
Montre.
Montre.
Lots of filling to do today.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you for sending that to me, Angie.
You're welcome, you have it.
Yeah, I got it, thank you. Got a new, we've got some new recording thing that you.
We do, so minutes, so it's AI recording.
Oh, I feel bad.
So just talk to me early and don't, talk on top of each other, because if you talk on top of each other, it's crazy.
Okay.
Now, do you, do you just pretty much do it as it comes in, or do you go in and try to clean it up afterwards?
I go in and clean it up, yeah.
Make sure he doesn't smell. I know it requires cleanup, yeah.
Sometimes it does really, really good, like it gets every bit, and then other times it's like, we're working, we're even there.
This is a zoning meeting.
And either day it works, Julie, the first or the.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. So Sally was a maybe.
Have we got a quorum?
I'm sorry?
Have we got a quorum?
Well, that's what I was wondering, because Mike hasn't been sworn in yet. And Brandon was going to join. There's Brandon. Okay, Brandon, we have a question for you already.
Okay.
So there's, three of us here are current members, one who needs, who needs sworn in. If there are seven, how, how do we count quorum?
Half plus one.
What's half? Does half include?
Four? Seven, yeah, four is a quorum.
Well, okay, so, but what I mean is, like, it doesn't count the alternate, and it doesn't count the fact that one person stepped down, so it's seven, you know what I'm saying? Do we have a quorum?
You've got four people here?
We have, um, Mike has not been sworn in yet.
Sworn in.
Uh, well, I think when he's sworn in, he'll have a quorum.
Okay.
So that gives me some leverage. If I don't want to get sworn in.
What do you want?
I was going to say, exercise it carefully.
We just might make you the, the new head.
I was going to say, we got, we got some openings to address, so. So we're a minute away from getting started, just to remind everybody, you got to really lean in, your mic should already be on, so, so please, please definitely use it to make it easier for Angie on minutes.
Are we, are we live too? Is that, well, we're going to keep doing that until the end of time now? Okay. Thank you, Kasey.
Hey, Sally? Come on in. Did you? Did you want to sit?
I, I don't know, I'm often, so I sit here.
Um, I, I was going to say yes, if we have room, what do you think?
Is there a, is there a name for an alternate today?
I think so.
Yes.
Liz, Mike.
Right. And we haven't filled that seat. Okay.
Sally, I sort of was thinking, 100% sure.
Okay, and that's your lovely broad?
Yeah.
Okay, we're at 10:30, so I'm going to call the meeting to order as soon as Sally gets. Okay, 10:31, calling the meeting to order, welcome everybody, especially our new members and our guests, I'll pause for a moment of silence. I'm in. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as published and in front of you, if you have it printed out, is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Do you have copies of the agenda, or is it? I can pull it up.
Here, I have, here.
I can pull it up.
Do you need a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, I'll call for a vote, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? No, unanimously passes, with Eleanor as motioning and Sally a second. All right, shall we move on to the adoption of the meeting minutes? I'd like to mention that I've got some adjustments to it, to the January meeting minutes, and we'll start there. Are there others who are going to have adjustments or comments as well?
No.
Okay. It's a pretty minor one, I would ask that my name be spelled S-C-H-E-L-L.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, please.
I'll fix it.
Thank you. Are there any other amendments or edits to the January meeting minutes? All right, I would ask for a motion to adopt the January meeting minutes as drafted and amended.
Motion.
Motion, thank you, motion by Eleanor, second by Clay, and I will call for a vote, aye if you approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion passes. Okay, let's move on to the adoption of the February meeting minutes. Angie, you might guess that I have. An adjustment into that one as well. I also wanted to note, and to the call to order, there were introductions, and I, I don't believe that we need to, to describe all of them, but, but I would ask that we add, other members also provided introductions, to just correctly reflect that there were others who did so.
Okay.
Other members also provided introductions, and I would insert that between where Alan introduced himself and Brandon.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, I believe there was a description under the sign ordinance subcommittee, there's a sentence in there that I don't believe reflects the dialogue around Chair Johnson confirming their waiting to ensure the lodge situation is resolved.
So I re-listened to the tape, and what was actually said was Julie Schell served on the sign ordinance committee with Dan Dean and John Handel, who have both signed above, volunteers needed to fill their spots on this subcommittee, and Ms. Schell advised that this committee has been on hold. So what was the actions?
Thank you, I would definitely like to have, what is that paragraph under the sign ordinance subcommittee substitute in what you've written? Are there any other changes or edits to the February meeting minutes? All right, seeking a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, vote, please say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion is unanimously passed. All right, moving swiftly into swearing in of new members. Mike Prissard, welcome, and Angie, I believe is ready to swear you in, so if you will prepare for that.
I'll be ready. I'm Michael Prissard, swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Montreau according to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Super, thank you. All right, moving on to the organization of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I would note that Liz Johnson has stepped down from the commission, and so we have a vacancy in the chair, and I would also note, even though we're not to the subcommittee updates yet, there are also numerous openings on the subcommittees, so we are definitely seeking some commitments there. Starting first with the election of officers, it's a little bit awkward to talk about myself, but I did want to note I would be willing to move from vice chair to chair, with the, with the fact that I've been on the commission for a few years, I just wanted to go ahead and, and volunteer myself for that, but I also definitely want to ask other commission members if they have an interest in doing it, because it could be anybody.
Nope.
All right, may I have a motion on, or a nomination on the election of the chair?
I nominate Julie Schell for chairperson.
And so I believe we need to, okay, so your nomination is the motion, I heard Clay second, may we please have a vote?
Yes.
Yay.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it, any nays? Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now we have a vacancy in the vice chair, so I would ask for nominations or volunteers for vice chair, it is a position where you need to be willing to step in and act as chair in any given meeting, so I just wanted to mention that, and would appreciate anyone who is willing to step forward to be vice chair.
Clay, you look like you need to become vice chair.
Me?
Yeah.
I don't have, I just moved into the Valley in September, I'm happy to do it, but if somebody's got more experience, then happy to do that.
I'm brand new.
I didn't even know where to sit when I walked in the room.
And I'm brand new. Sally?
I'm brand new.
We're all brand new, what do we do?
Yeah, let me ask a question of point of order, are we, it's okay to leave it open for now?
That would be okay as well.
Okay, so yes, I don't want anybody to feel like they need to, to step forward when they, you know, there's lots of new people on the commission, and we certainly appreciate your service.
I'm happy to do it, but, I mean, if somebody, if you think somebody's got more experience, I'm happy to cede to them, I don't know who's, the people who aren't here today.
We, yes, we do have some folks who, who are not here today, so I'm, I'm totally, I mean, I think we're willing to wait a meeting or, or fill it.
It's, it's up to you.
Do you think there's somebody else that would be willing to?
I have, I haven't asked anybody, because I think it would be, you know, we would do it within the meeting, but, yeah, so we do have others who have been on the commission for several years, or for a year at least.
Madam Chairman, I think we ought to go ahead and get Clay before he realizes.
Or he backs out.
That would be my thought.
You're just mad because I didn't share my cookies.
Is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Clay.
A second.
All right, we'll move it, are you?
Sure.
Okay, we'll move it to a vote, everybody who's willing to support Clay, including Clay, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, thank you Clay very much. All right, we're moving quickly to the seventh item, old, under old business subcommittee updates. We don't have an update from the Hillside Development Subcommittee, we actually don't have our chair of that anymore, and we need to elect new members, including a chair and a secretary, and, and we will rinse and repeat with these other subcommittees, I wanted to mention a couple of things, the, the Hillside Development Subcommittee and the sign ordinance Subcommittee have been, there have been numerous, numerous meetings, I can speak personally to the sign ordinance Subcommittee, it's been over several years, and is near completion, so, and the Hillside Development Subcommittee was on its way as well, so, but let's start with Hillside, is there anyone who is interested to become a member of the Hillside Subcommittee?
Oh, I'll be.
Thank you. Okay, Eleanor, any other members, Alan is on that Subcommittee, and we need two, we need three members total, including a chair and a secretary, so we would need an additional member of the Hillside Development Subcommittee.
Where is page nine, where it says, parentheses, page nine, Subcommittee Updates?
So if you go past the minutes, and it's a page that looks like this, yes, Eleanor's holding it up. And so what you can see on there is there's two vacancies, one for chair and one for secretary, the responsibilities of the secretary are to, to take notes in the event that the minute meeting, the meeting minute software doesn't work, because we do need to keep minutes for these meetings, another item to note is the subcommittees need to have formal meetings, it's open to the public, they'll be announced to the public a week in advance for transparency and to enable the public to join, and we generally hold them in the room, the conference room that's across the hall.
How frequently are they, are they occurring?
That's a good question, I can't speak to Hillside because Liz was leading that, on the sign Subcommittee, we tried to meet every other month, you know, every month, every other month on that, I mean, we, we literally were at the last meeting on September 27th, so, we were so close, I know there's been a lot of work on that Hillside Development, I think it would be a matter of reviewing the proposed changes today, understanding it in the context of, of where the community is now.
Okay.
And then making a recommendation to the commission, which then will go to the Board of Commissioners to make the final decision.
Could you do a synopsis of the committees for meetings?
Sure, so there, there are three subcommittees, and, and they're primarily around making changes to existing ordinances that Planning and Zoning takes care of or is otherwise requested to do by the Board of Commissioners, and the, the three areas of focus over the several years that I've been on the commission have been Hillside Development, updating the signs ordinance, and then the last category of zoning ordinances, we hadn't started on that yet, there's a list of relatively smaller changes that need to be made to the zoning ordinance that have been collected over the years, Dan Dean was collecting that for us, and it gets to be a pretty long list, so it's kind of a cleanup list, and that work had not started yet.
So my question is, like, on Hillside Development, are we mostly concerned with erosion and stormwater, is that what that mostly is?
I, I would have to ask Brandon if you, I mean, I had, I did not sit in on any of those meetings.
I have not, I don't like to go in meetings.
It's, I know some of the, the updates were around the, the steepness, you know, some of the requirements to be adhered to, there was a lot, I mean, there's clearly been a focus within the Valley on erosion and concerns about construction on, you know, what it means for the, the hillsides, but I did not attend any of the meetings, so beyond that, I just know the summaries that were given.
And I'm assuming sign ordinance is just where you can put signs and what, what are the nature of this?
The, the sign ordinance updates were really looking back at a fairly aged ordinance, and there are changes such as making sure it's in compliance with federal and state laws, and those are, are fairly significant, and then smaller changes such as overlapping provisions with the general ordinance, you want to make sure there's no conflicts with other ordinances, making sure that it was clear language so that Kayla was comfortable as administrator that she knew what to do, I think there's also been a view of. I think there's also been a view over the years that I've been on the commission to be just really clear, to take out anything that looks subjective and have really objective language, because we need to be able to enforce it. So on the Sign Ordinance Subcommittee, because I've been on it, you know, I'm very comfortable that we are really close to finishing that. We would need new members to review it and make sure that they were comfortable on it and informed and ask any questions that they have. But then I actually have a couple of dates to try and establish first. The first, that may be the last meeting that this group would need to have on the sign ordinance, because we were literally going to vote on it in the Subcommittee on September 27th.
Are these members only from the Planning and Zoning Committee? Are there any public members?
So, and so it was a couple of meetings ago that we had that discussion about whether we wanted to, yes.
I think we said no.
And we said no. But members of the community are welcome to join, including any that are experts in the field, welcome to join, to participate. It's not just to ask questions, but to also participate.
So there's seven zoning board members, and you've got 12 positions, so we've got to double up, basically.
Right. I mean, you know, that's really what it comes down to. And I would recommend, you know, subject to what the commission wants to do, that we really focus on Hillside Development and Sign Ordinance, so we can finish those. And then consider doubling up on the zoning ordinance, which really, you know, we can tackle after we've finished the first two.
Will those committees stop meeting after they're?
The third one has never met.
But the first two would be?
The first two would start meeting, and I would recommend that new members just, you know, read all the materials, come with questions, be prepared to jump in, you know, right away. And then if anything needs to be changed that's already been, you know, recommended, that Subcommittee should feel free to do that, right? Take real ownership.
Okay, so I'll do Hillside.
Okay.
But I will not do secretary, because that's, I don't want to do that. Taking the minutes that I've?
I don't mind being secretary.
Looks like Alan's chair.
Okay, so Eleanor, secretary. And we will move to the point of actually forming, yeah, formalizing this. So Sally, are you volunteering to be chair for Hillside?
No, I'm just volunteering to be on, we can make Alan chair.
Well, probably not without his agreement. That still means that we have a vacancy for chair of the Hillside.
Brand new, don't feel like I can do that.
Yep. Okay, then we'll see how this rolls. If I act as chair on Hillside, then I would need a chair on Sign Ordinance Subcommittee. I'm secretary on the Sign Ordinance.
And Madam Chair, I do not think it would be a problem to appoint members to these subcommittees and allow the subcommittees to decide who their officers are at a later meeting.
Okay, such a good point. Thank you for that.
I don't think it would be a problem to appoint members to the Subcommittee, and then when those subcommittees meet, they can elect officers amongst themselves.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that, Brandon.
I conferred with Angie, and she said that squares with what is happening.
Okay, good. Yes, and yes, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, I'll go ahead and be on Sign Ordinance as well.
That sounds great. Okay, Julie, Eleanor, Sally on Hillside. And actually, Sally, if you're going to be, well, you both said that you want, okay, so I'll join Hillside, I'll stay on Sign. I'm already on Zoning. So any new members, any additional new members wishing to join Sign Ordinance? We need a third.
Which one do you need a third for?
Sign.
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, Clay. All right, and then Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee.
I'm happy to participate on that one. That one, I'm assuming, based on what we have to decide today, could have quite a bit of work.
I think that's going to be a pretty substantial one. I would agree with that. And I haven't seen the list in a while, but Dan Dean was keeping it, which means it was comprehensive.
I'm happy to participate on that one.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to join the Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee?
I'll be on that as well. I think that's, maybe I should be on just two there. Yeah, let me just be on, let me be on Hillside and Zoning.
That sounds good.
Yeah, let me do that.
Okay. So to summarize, Hillside Development Subcommittee, Julie, Eleanor, Sally, being added. Alan Crawford is already on it. The Sign Ordinance Subcommittee, Julie Shell stays on as secretary. Eleanor and Clay join.
No, I'm going to drop off that, go to zoning.
Okay, so we still, that means we need somebody else for signs?
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about the work, I'm concerned about the necessity of being here, because I don't live here full time.
Yeah.
So how often does the Sign Ordinance Subcommittee meet?
We are looking at, I was going to seek to schedule it on May 1st or May 8th in the afternoon, which has been cleared. Kayla can join as zoning administrator, and Angie's confirmed that the room is open. It's, I can't promise that it would be done in one meeting, but that's the intent, because we were pretty close to voting on it.
Are you saying that after that, they won't be meeting at all?
If we?
If you pass what you need to pass?
If the Subcommittee agrees to the work that's already been done, then yes. I still imagine that it would be a lengthy meeting, because if I were new coming in, I would have a lot of questions and want to understand the nature of the changes, so I don't, you know, I can't say it wouldn't lead to a second meeting.
But once it's voted on, that Subcommittee is kind of?
Right, then it comes to the commission. The commission makes a recommendation, does the same review and makes a recommendation, and then goes to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, but it is, I mean, I do recognize your challenge, Mike, because it needs to be in person.
I'm not here on the 8th, but I'm here on the 1st.
Super. Okay, thank you. That always simplifies things. Okay, any, anyone else? And at this point, if we don't have any other volunteers, that's fine, we'll table it, we'll move with what we've got.
You said 1st or 8th?
Well, yes, and it sounds like it would be the 1st, because that's when Clay can join. It would be the afternoon of May 1st. Kayla's available 1:30 to 4:30.
I can't do it.
So who are we missing? We're missing Bill?
Yep, we're missing Bill, Alan. That's it.
So maybe one of them could have?
Yep. All right, well, why don't we go ahead and move forward with what we're able to do? So I'm going to read through it again to make sure I got it right. Hillside Development, Julie, Eleanor, and Sally, in addition to Alan who stays on. Sign ordinance, Julie as secretary, Clay also joining, a open seat. And on Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee, Alan and Julie are already on it, Clay and Eleanor join, which will fill up that Subcommittee. Any changes to that? Okay. May I have a motion to move forward those appointments as I've laid out?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion unanimously passes. All right. Moving on to new business. Board of Commissioners request a text amendment. Brandon, will you walk us through the request by the Board of Commissioners?
Happy to. The Board of Commissioners, at its last meeting, asked the Subcommittee to consider whether it would be a good idea for the town to allow a, for variances from its stormwater ordinance. Currently, there is no variance procedure in the stormwater ordinance. The stormwater ordinance is designed to make for the safe and manageable flow of post-construction stormwater within the community. There are a lot of standards to that ordinance. Variances are something that are oftentimes included in ordinances and require that someone who has a project that they would like to complete, but there is some sort of hardship that would allow them, that would prohibit them following the ordinance, that's when a variance comes in. And it's a very specific, it requires a very specific finding of fact from the Board of Adjustment, or whatever quasi initial board is looking at the proposed variance. And it's specific to the case that is applying for the variance. What you all are being asked to look at today is whether it is a good idea to permit variances from the town's stormwater ordinance.
And to be clear, these are all tied to post-construction?
That's right. That's right.
To post-construction?
Right, before construction, your erosion, your sediment and erosion control ordinance governs.
Okay.
And that would be why you see silt fences around construction projects and things like that.
But is it still tied to the contractor, or are these our homeowners after construction?
It is after construction. It is tied to contractors who install the infrastructure, and then homeowners have an ongoing duty to maintain that infrastructure and make sure that it delivers water safely into the stormwater system.
So this means if, this tracks with the management of water due to adding more concrete or asphalt, I guess what we would say is impervious surface?
That's right.
Okay.
It also applies to streams, intermittent streams, because there was that 30-foot. Is that included in this as well?
Yes, so your stormwater ordinance does contain a provision that prohibits erecting buildings within 30 feet of surface waters. That would be, that is one of the provisions. There are many provisions in your stormwater ordinance.
But that would be pre-construction, right?
Well, the building, after it's built, it would be part of the post-construction. It's a building that exists. So I think that's.
So we have standards for the contractor building it? We don't have standards once they walk off?
You do. Currently, you do have a stormwater management ordinance that governs people.
Or a capacity to ask for a variance.
That's right. That's what you do not have, is you have a stormwater ordinance, you do not have the ability to allow someone to vary from the strict rules in that ordinance.
After construction?
Yeah.
Well, we would want them to come to the town prior to doing any construction that would violate.
Well, I must have misunderstood. I thought you said earlier that we already have rules that would govern pre-construction to allow them to come and ask for a variance. Is that, am I mistaken?
That was unclear on my part. When I think of stormwater, when I think of water management, like how we deal with the effects of water on property, I think of it in two phases. The first is construction, and that's when you are building a house, you have erosion control measures, which, that's why, again, you see a silt fence up. That is your erosion control ordinance. It says while you're building something, you have to make sure that your building doesn't do things like discharge a lot of sediment into creeks and rivers, you know, because it's not good for creeks and rivers. But even after your project is complete, the stormwater ordinance will have done a couple of things. One of those things is to say how you have to build your infrastructure and make sure that it meets the stormwater ordinance. And then after your installations are complete, the stormwater ordinance could require you to do ongoing maintenance to the stormwater infrastructure. If you have grates and stormwater systems and drains, you've got to keep those clear.
Has there been a request to the town about this? I mean, I'm bluntly thinking about after this hurricane. Things, creeks may have changed, water runoff may have changed. Has there, I mean, the reason we're dealing with this, has there been requests to the town about that?
So there's been requests to the town for, I believe, a text amendment recently. The variance procedure, there hasn't been a request for a variance, because there's no procedure.
There's no building. So there isn't one?
For a variance. The, when the board was looking at a last text amendment, it seemed like it was sort of a square peg in a round hole. And the discussion that I had with the board is frankly what led to this coming before this board, is the idea that if you have something in your stormwater ordinance that you would like to vary from, the way to do that is to, would be to have a variance procedure. But it is a big decision to decide whether you want to include a variance procedure in a stormwater ordinance.
Yep.
In, speaking of variances, in the many pages that Kayla sent of all the examples, it talks about if there's less than one acre of land is only exempt, is that, is that, how does that work? I don't quite understand that. It seems like most plots of land here in Montreux are less than one acre. So would that not exempt most of, from that?
So that is a technical analysis. I think today we're here to talk about variances. I don't want to go down a rabbit hole about how exemptions work. I think I would rather focus today's conversation on variances. Generally, I believe that what you're referring to would exempt people from obtaining a permit, but whether a permit is required is a separate conversation from whether the standards of the ordinance must be followed. So those standards apply, and this variance would be for those standards.
So let me be clear where we are. Hailing happened, so some people, that has affected their understanding of how they would be able to comply with stormwater. So there is some desire to have the possibility of variance, which the commission would consider on an individual basis. Still, they would have oversight in terms of, you know, agreeing to the variance or not, correct?
The variance would go to the Board of Adjustment.
And ultimately, too.
For a variance typically, and, you know, the way this would work in most jurisdictions is a request for a variance goes for, to the Board of Adjustment as a quasi judicial body. And the Board of Adjustment looks at that request not as a legislative decision, but they're sitting as judges, and they are determining, are the standards met? Is there a hardship in this case? Is this something that we should allow a variance for? If the answer is yes, they grant the variance, but no, the variance is denied, the next phase from there would be an appeal to Superior Court. It would not go to the Board of Commissioners.
So in essence, we're just asking, we're just dealing with language that will either allow variances to happen post-construction or not?
That's right.
That's just it.
That's it. Yep.
The post-construction is probably a wonky term that I said, that is probably just so in confusion. I would think about this more as just your stormwater ordinance. And it does, there's a lot of it that takes place before construction, because you've got to submit plans for your stormwater system and make sure that whatever construction you're doing would meet the stormwater ordinance. And then after construction, you would have duties to maintain whatever that stormwater system is.
So the language that's been proposed matches almost, well, some of it is almost exactly to the language and the model ordinance from the UNC School of Government? Did I understand that correctly?
Is that similar to any other variances that are allowed in Montreux? The same type of language?
Yes, if, they would be, look very familiar. The variance standard in North Carolina is pretty uniform and requires the showing of a hardship.
When I read the proposed language, it basically said you can ask for anything under that. It just kind of opens the door to anything. Is that typical?
Well, this is, what we have drafted is based off of the model ordinance from the School of Government. And I think that the School of Government would not suggest something that is atypical, so I won't say that I've read enough stormwater ordinances to know it was completely typical, but I believe, I did not see limitations in the examples that Kayla provided, and I believe that the School of Government's model ordinance reflects how I've seen. I believe that the School of Government's model ordinance reflects how I've seen stormwater ordinances operating in the jurisdictions.
And the spirit would be that maybe we couldn't foresee everything that might be presented, correct?
I believe that's right.
Yeah. I would just note in looking at the, at the town's comprehensive plan, there are a number of objectives that touch on stormwater. A number of envi, of the environmental objectives, three, four, seven, and, and nine. So it's, it's certainly top of mind with the community to, to make sure that we're managing stormwater appropriately. I can probably read a few of them, but it was really interesting to me because the, the comp plan was updated in 2022, 23, so this was certainly before Helene. But it includes, you know, inventorying the current stormwater infrastructure and examining areas for improvement, creating a voluntary stormwater control set of measures, local, updating local erosion and sediment controls for grading, adoption of additional stream protection ordinances. So I just wanted to note, I mean, I think this is a topic because of recent events, but it's also just, just been a focus of the community for a long time, particularly living in the valley with wonderful natural water around us. So I, part of the challenge that I see in this is the, the additional language instructs effectively the Board of Adjustment, unless I describe this inappropriately, Brandon, jump in, but to, to meet these qualifications around unnecessary hardships, hardships peculiar to the property, hardships that did not result from actions taken by the petitioner, and also ensuring that the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, intent of the stormwater management regulations. Brandon, could you touch on what secure public safety and welfare means? I didn't really understand that language.
So I, I think that what, these four items, the subsections in the new section, does everyone have this pulled up? Everyone see it? So this is in the packet, it looks like, is it page?
It says staff language new.
Got it.
Yep.
Maybe page 15. So the, the public safety and welfare component would be if, if the variance in the way it operated would impair public safety or welfare, like maybe it, you know, creates an unreasonable discharge onto someone else's property or onto a sidewalk. That, that would, that in my mind would run afoul of, it would not secure the public safety or welfare. Again, the Board of Adjustment, when they look at these cases, they're sitting as judges. So a lot of this does come down to a judgment call. And reasonable minds can disagree as to what aspects of a variance could secure for the public safety and welfare. But that would be the tough job of the Board of Adjustment to look at the case, look at the, the facts and evidence and make a determination as to whether that item was met. I think it's important to know that all four of those items have to be met. It's not just one of them, it's all four of them. Variance standards are tough standards.
What is the difference in the language from the, is this what's on there now or, or there's nothing in there now about variances?
This would be a new section.
Okay, this is a new section. So there's nothing about variances in that?
That's right.
Okay.
You, you mentioned the Board of Adjustments and that's, I think that's kind of where I just want to focus a little bit. Does this give them everything they need? Because water runoff, I've only been here a while, but I've, I've heard a lot of stories about people unhappy because somebody built too close to a stream or somebody didn't control it. And I don't want to set the Board of Adjustments up for failure because they don't have the background and the support they need.
Can I speak to that? Having just been on the Board of Adjustments and having to deal with that. Usually when something like this comes up and we're dealing with stormwater runoff, whoever's asking for a variance is usually bringing an engineer, is usually bringing a stormwater, you know, someone who's got a lot of information to give, because if we don't understand it on the Board of Adjustment, we'll probably say no. So it's, in my experience, they bring tons of information that we digest and look at.
But does this give you the background that you would need on that, on that board?
Nobody has, well, nobody has any background on that.
Not the background, but, I mean, if, if something doesn't, you know, if, if you, if you aren't comfortable with it, do you have enough here that you can say no?
I think by, by meeting all of these, because a lot of the times, they'll meet three of them, but not the fourth. And if it doesn't do that, we have to say no. And that's, that's kind of built into our responses too. We are constantly reminded, you must meet all of these, like six or, other than this, there's like six or seven other issues that the Board of Adjustment must look at each time. And if any of those don't meet, so this just gives another layer of, of things that they must meet in addition. So looking at that, I, I like that there's a lot more, you know, areas of where if we're not feeling 100% about this, we can do that.
Julie, you mentioned...
It is subjective.
You mentioned the comprehensive plan. That's not referenced here.
Well, I was just going to ask, Brandon, is the Board of Adjustment, like the P&amp;Z required to consider the comprehensive plan when, when adopting or approving variances?
Not in this context. Not in this context. The variance would just be limited to, to these.
Oh, just those?
These four items. That's right. Now, you know, I think that whether, let me, the request of variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the stormwater management regulations, this article, you know, I think that that is, you know, something that may start to tie into, you know, your comprehensive plan. You know, I, I would need to look at it, but I imagine that it does speak to the importance of having a stormwater management plan. Stormwater management plans are tied to, to insurance rates and all kinds of important things.
Would it make sense to add something to that first, you know, application of the stormwater management regulations, including town, town regulations or such as the comprehensive plan or something like that?
I, I would feel a little nervous about adding a requirement like that because these variants, this variance standard is one that is well settled with the courts and is one that they are used to seeing. The consideration of the comprehensive plan is a requirement that is imposed on planning boards and legislative bodies. And the real intent of requiring a, a legislative body to look at the, the comprehensive plan is so that the legislature wanted to make sure that people had the comprehensive plan in mind when they made legislative decisions. It's why you can determine that a project is completely opposed to your comprehensive plan and adopt it nonetheless. They aren't saying you have to follow your comprehensive plan. They're saying it's important that you remember it. But I think that that is very much in the legislative camp and this will be in the quasi judicial camp for, you know, for, for board members sitting as judges. So I would be a little worried of, of bringing sort of that legislative component into a quasi judicial.
So, so you're saying that when someone wants to do a stormwater variance, they don't have to meet the other, it's not, it's a different kind of variance than the normal variances that come up in front of the Board of Adjustments? Because there's six or seven things we have to look at. So you're saying this, they don't have to look at that part, just this?
When those variances come to the Board of Adjustment, they are usually coming from a specific ordinance and that specific ordinance has within it its own variance procedure. So when you look at, you know, if you have a, a variance from your zoning ordinance, you would be looking at whatever zoning regulation, maybe it's a side setback or a front setback. You would be looking at that, that zoning ordinance and then applying the variance that's in the zoning ordinance. For this, it would be, you wouldn't be looking at any other variance. You would be looking at, at this variance section that's contained in the stormwater.
Is Kayla here today? She's not, oh, she, okay.
But this commission needs to consider the comp plan and making a recommendation. That's part of our job as the Planning and Zoning Commission. Consider the, the comp, the town's comprehensive plan and making a recommendation.
That is a good question. Let me look at that. This is not a change to your zoning map and it's not, you know, this is, this is a text amendment. I'm not sure that you need to, to do a comp plan analysis. I would say it probably would hurt to, to, to think about that, but I don't believe that it's required for a text amendment.
So when you said this is a big decision to make, you know, variance available for stormwater, I realize we're making a lot of work for Board of Adjustments. They're going to have potentially a whole new slate of possibilities. On the other hand, it seems like, I'm just thinking, I've never thought about this, but we live in the valley and it seems like stormwater is a big issue and it seems like there have to be conditions that maybe we haven't thought of, you know, that are variances that people want to...
In light of the hurricane, I think there's a lot of new issues that are out there now.
So I'm kind of a big picture person. It just seems to me that there might be people out there with needs that to not have a variance, we're not considering. That's just what I'm thinking.
I, I agree. I think having a variance makes sense. I just want to make sure we're not throwing the barn door open and allowing people to do whatever they want. And what you're saying that because there's not anything in, in the stormwater regulations to reference things like the, the comprehensive plan, do we need to go back and revisit that as well and make sure that the guidance includes, you know, things like, that are very particular to Monterey?
Well, I think, Brandon, what you're saying is that for planning and zoning activities, when we are updating the planning and zoning ordinances, we're required to consider the comprehensive plan in those changes. This is not a change to the planning and zoning ordinance.
No, but, but the, the, the regulations for stormwater management, as I understood what you're saying, is that because it doesn't, it only has these four requirements, it doesn't have anything about other Monterey regulations or guidance such as the comprehensive plan, do we need to recommend that that type of language be put into the overall stormwater so that it does apply?
I think that's a separate conversation. I...
It's a chicken or egg thing?
Well, you know, your, your stormwater management, your stormwater management ordinance, I, I see it as, as, you know, it's an important ordinance to have, you're required to have it for your, your flood insurance and it affects property owners in that way. You know, you're required to meet the standards that are, that are set out by the, by federal and state law. You know, I, for that reason, I think it's a little different. It's, it's different than your, your comprehensive plan, which is, you know, really tied more to how your, how your community's going to grow. I'll be honest with you, I've not thought a lot about the interplay between a comprehensive plan and a stormwater management plan. I've always sort of seen them as, you know, your stormwater management plan is a plan that is something that is based off of best engineering practices and best stormwater management practices. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't see them as, as too closely related, but I'm happy to look into it.
Can I, I'd like to speak to, again, just the language. The clearer and less subj, subjective guidance is better for the Board of Adjustments because when you get into real subjective stuff, you know, that's, that's an opinion. And Board of Adjustments, I think, are really, you know, I, I thought we did a good job on there. But if someone objects to it, that is a door to open that the neighbor goes, oh, this is not in the spirit of the comprehensive plan. And all of a sudden, you've got a whole bunch of opinions being thrown out there. And it, like I said, the, the clearer and the more precise the language, the better. Angie, is there a way to pull up the, remember when we were on the, when I was on the Board of Adjustment, there was five or six things that we had to look at each time when we were looking at a variance? You remember what? Can you bring, can you pull that up somehow or find that?
I can try.
Because I, if I remember correctly, there was one where we had to consider the public welfare and health and welfare.
One other question, and I'm very glad you're here, because that's, I don't understand that side very well. Is there, is there a public hearing or notice for every variance that goes out?
Yes.
So, so people have...
Yes.
Opportunities to...
To come in and say, we don't like this and this is why. We don't think it belongs, you know, whatever. And a lot of times people come in with just their opinion, but not with a storm, you know, a stormwater person that's objecting to that. So that's why the more precise, the better. But I do believe there was something in, again, as a Board of Adjustment member, where we had to consider the public, the, that secure the public safety and welfare, that part of it was...
Wasn't the language very similar to this?
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't the standards, wasn't it very similar to what we're looking at?
Um, not with it. This is more detailed about hardship. There is one that talks about hardship. There is one that talks about, you know, are you meeting public safety and, you know, and again, that's why I'm hoping Angie can pull those up. So it might, it might make it clear what you have to consider in all variances. This is, you know, this is in addition to what we already have to consider. So that's why I like it. It's much more detailed and, you know, you have to meet these four. If she can, I don't know if she can find it, but...
I'm still looking.
I think I've got it.
There are like six requirements that you have to...
Yeah. So the first is a hardship. When considering unnecessary, when considering unnecessary hardship result from carrying out of the strict letter of the ordinance, the Board of Adjustment shall grant a variance upon showing that all of the following unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance. It shall not be necessary to demonstrate that in the absence of a variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. And I am on page, it's like 82 of the zoning board, or, I'm sorry, page 77 of the, the Monterey zoning ordinance. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as location, size, topography. Hardships resulting from personal circumstances as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or general public may not be the basis for granting of a variance. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. The act of purchasing property with knowledge of the circumstances exists, may justify the granting of the variance, shall not be regarded as a self-created hardship. The variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved. Variance is requested, the variance requested is the minimum variance that would make possible the legal use of the building or structure. The variance is not requested to permit a use of land, building, or structure which is not permitted in the zoning district involved.
So we have to consider those in addition to this?
So these, this is what I meant when I said, when you're looking at a zoning variance, you would apply this variance standard, because this is the variance standard that's compliant.
So this, okay, so this would not have those requirements?
This, the ordinance that you were considering today would only have the...
Only these, okay.
...in front of you. Now, that is not to say they are not robust. There's a lot of overlap there. So it may make sense to, so first of all, getting back to the, the, your, your land use plan, I've kind of got two questions that I've run down in the meantime. The first is, for the adoption of this ordinance, are you required to do a consistency statement? I think the answer is no. In 160D, it says that a consistency of statement is, is required for amendments to your zoning ordinance. And I think this is an amendment to your stormwater management ordinance. So I do not think...
Which is part of the general ordinance.
That's right. I, I don't, I don't think that you are required to, to have a consistency statement here. But my guess that stormwater was, was mentioned in your comprehensive plan?
I'm sorry, Brandon. I am, I am going to interrupt you though, because on, on page five with the memo from, from Kayla, it says, in addition to recommending amended language, the P&amp;Z must also evaluate whether the amendment is or is not consistent with the town's comp plan.
Well, I am not going to argue with Kayla, even though she's not here.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. It took me a minute to find it.
Well, then this, this dovetails into what I was going to say next, which is that your, your comprehensive plan does... Well, then this, this dovetails into what I was going to say next, which is that your, your comprehensive plan does mention stormwater. The important issue of stormwater is directly related to water quality and health runoff from impervious surfaces such as streets, parking lots, rooftops sends chemical pollutants unwanted materials and especially sediment directly into streams without filtra- without filtration measurements through water treatment facility, sediment is particularly problematic. So I am on page twenty-four of the comprehensive plan. You could take a break to look at it. It's page twenty-four and twenty-five is, I think, the bulk of what your comprehensive plan says about stormwater management and it references your ordinance and that the federal Clean Water Act requires communities to adhere to management principles for stormwater runoff and to control non-point source pollution. They reference the, the, the phase two regulations. Where we pulled this variance on.
Right.
So is the other reason that is another reason this is a big decision is? So if board adjustments allows a variance beyond the bounds of the strict one that's already in stormwater, then they're opening themselves up in some ways to legal repercussions.
Well, I think that before you respond to that, Brandon, the way I think about it Sally is if the, if the language is written objectively, then the board of adjustment can follow it and I, I would assume that they would be able to execute their duties. I think the challenge is it is hard for a section to anticipate all the possible changes. So yeah, so I would acknowledge I, I feel very conflicted on this because I, I want the community to be able to make changes necessary to safely use their land. But there's also clearly a, a community intent to be very careful about stormwater. So I, I, that's, that is a challenge.
So Eleanor, as a past member or as a member of this, when people come and have their engineer, you're asking, I'm just being, they have to tell you ways that this won't adversely affect them.
They have to prove.
And you will feel confident in that before you-
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's already standards that they have to make. They, they have to meet. So if they want to do something different, they want to use a different type of water retainment or, you know, different, all sorts of different ways of diverting things, you know, they have to come up and show, they have to meet the minimum anyhow. So this is just a, maybe a different way of doing it. And it's, it's, I would think it would be rare for somebody to come in and just go, oh, I want to do that and not show. You know, I mean, the board of adjustment takes this very seriously, especially in lieu of past things that have come up and possibilities of lawsuits and things. I think this one that says the secure public safety and welfare, I mean, that, that is the key right there. That goes to the
That really supports-
The comprehensive plan.
And substantial justice.
I mean, nobody wants to live in a polluted area. Absolutely. On the other hand, just speaking personally, I want to make sure that if you live here in Monterey, that you are not forced to leave your house because of, of some, something beyond your control. And we give you no way of, of, you know, rectifying that in a, you know, logical, easy way. Not easy way, but that's the word I'm looking for.
Brandon, what I'm, I'm going to, I have a very fundamental lack of understanding here. If this isn't passed, how does it work? Somebody wants to build a place in the valley and they have to do something to comply with the stormwater management program, correct? Whether it's the, it has to be reviewed by the engineers and that type of thing. So there's, there's a mechanism to make sure that that is complied with. We already have that.
Yes.
And that involves the board of adjustment. If, well, if they want to do something differently, wouldn't it be that they would go to the board of adjustment and say, we think this is too, the creek really isn't that close or something. That would be a board of adjustment thing, right?
That's right. So currently you have the ordinance, but you do not have the ability for this ordinance to go to the board of adjustment and ask for any sort of variance from it. You would be held to the strict application of that ordinance to your property.
Okay. So people have been building here for a long time. What I'm unclear on is what is this going to do? What, I mean, this is going to be, you talked early on and I'm trying to catch you pre and post construction and you said that was probably the wrong way to go. What, what in the scheme of things is this amendment going to provide the city or the town of Monterey that we don't already have? Why is it needed now? Is that what you're? Yeah, another way, another nice neat way of putting it.
Yeah. I, I am not advocating that you adopt it. I'm, I'm pretty neutral on, on this. There was, there seemed to be some appetite to investigate, what do you do when there is a situation where, you know, you, you want to do something with your property and, you know, the, the strict application of the ordinance would prevent it. This is the mechanism, how you would evaluate that.
Currently, if I want to do something and it's, who makes the determination that it's not in compliance with the current rules? Who would tell me, no Mike, you can't do that?
Yeah, the town stormwater administrator. Kayla DiCristina.
Currently, I don't have, if town stormwater administrator says no, that's the end of the conversation?
Well, currently if, if what you wanted to do was, was not adhering to the strict application of the stormwater ordinance, then that's right. You would not be able to, to do that activity. Or you would have to meet whatever the, the requirements of the ordinance are. So scale back a plan or talk to an engineer about an engineered solution.
And then they come to your people, right?
Yeah, and see-
Well, now this is, they can't, right now, there's not an option to go to the board of adjustment.
That's, that's the point is they can't right now. So-
Well, I've participated in that and I could have sworn the one that I sat in on was somebody saying that the stream really wasn't of some particular category and there was a debate about whether or not this was close enough, did it fall within the rules? So there was a mechanism that allowed the board of adjustment-
That one was more about whether this was actually a stream or not.
Right. But my point is only they, they, the-
That was before construction.
Yeah, the homeowner came to you before construction and it was resolved that, and I forgot what y'all decided, that it isn't a stream or it was-
Right, because there was lan- there was language not, not in the town's zoning, but in the state about what is the definition of an intermittent stream. It was quite interesting.
But my point is only, so there's a mechanism for the homeowners to a- address questions about the rules before they build their place.
I think I may be able to clear this up. Is it, so another thing that can come to the board of adjustment is if an admini- if a stormwater administrator makes a decision and the affected property owner disagrees with that decision,
Right.
they can appeal that decision to the board of adjustment.
That was, that was an appeal, yes.
And, and the job of the board of adjustment in that case is not to grant a variance. It's to say, was the administrator right or wrong?
Okay.
And so i- i- if the answer is the administrator is, is right and that it would have violated the ordinance, then the project is, is not allowed. It, it, there's no variance procedure in there. It's just, was the administrator right or wrong?
But you're still in front of a group and suggesting one interpretation of the rule over another.
That's right, but the, the key question is rule interpretation or was the right decision made? Not, we all know what the rule is.
And we want to change it. And we want to change it.
We either allowed or disallowed, it doesn't make any difference from my point. I don't mean to keep everybody on whether it was a stream or not, or a-
It's an intermittent stream.
Right. So they build. And is this designed then to allow them to seek a variance after they've built? And oh my gosh, guess what? The stream is running into my neighbor's property? I mean, I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing as, as-
No, I think, I think this is useful. So and, and I just want to say, I, you know, I've, I've, I've been here for, for less than a year here with town of Monterey. So I really don't know which, which, what, what case you're talking about in my mind.
You're doing a great job.
This is very hypothetical, right? So let's, let's stay in the hypothetical and let's think about a situation where the question is, is this a, a, an intermittent stream or a, a, a-
Seasonal or something.
Oh gosh, a femoral stream.
Yeah, femoral, yeah.
Is this a femoral stream or an intermittent stream or a, a perennial stream? And so if, if the question turns on that, you know, you may, you may have a, a situation where the administrator makes a decision and, oh, this is a perennial stream.
But we have, and I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
We already have a way to deal with that.
So what I'm saying is if you had a variance, the, the question may be posed differently. Maybe an applicant says, look, I'll acknowledge that this is a perennial stream. I'm just saying that I want to be able to do X, Y, and Z even though the ordinance says I normally shouldn't because I think I can beat these standards.
This is going to allow somebody, somebody, the board? Getting back to your original question, I was at the last council meeting where this came up. And somebody wants to add an addition and it doesn't meet the requirements.
Can, and, and I'm, I'm really sorry. I feel like this is kind of hot lava territory. I would, I really think that we should look at this, look at these questions, you know, without any specific examples in mind. I think hypothetical ones are fine.
But, you know, it comes back to this. Why is it now needed when for the history of Monterey or as long as this regulation has been there, things have been able to be worked out? You know, I don't know anything about the specifics of that request. I just know there was, there was a request that came up at the council meeting. And they referred it to us and, but, you know, it just, to me, it raises a question is what is needed? You know, that's not already available or- Yeah, I'm just trying to see, understand how this fits into the scheme of things, my friend. That's, that's what I'm, I'm just drawing a total blank. What does this provide that we don't already have?
Well, there are variances for so, for other things, but evidently stormwater has been, you know, you, you can't go outside the letter of the law.
And so all these years, all these years, the, the situation, the rule has been in Monterey. If you don't comply with the stormwater, you're done. You know, there's nobody to say, oh gee golly whiz, it's not right.
I, I think it all-
Is that what, is that, is that the scheme that we're at now?
I, I think that's fair to say. The, right now, the current state of the law in the town of Monterey is that the strict application of the stormwater management ordinance applies.
Okay, and who interprets that?
The zoning, the, the stormwater, the, the stormwater administrator. Kayla DiCristina.
My, my concern here is we've just had a major geographical event. I mean, this is something that hasn't happened in over a hundred-
What are you talking about? I'm sorry. Just kidding.
Please talk, don't talk to me like that.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Major geographical event. I think that's what this is all hinging on. I think you're right. Before this, you know, is very cut and dried. If, if a stream dried up, there's no be, you know, that's not a reason to, to, to need a variance on something. You kind of knew what you were doing when you built it. But we've had, you know, ge- geography changing. And I think that's maybe, and I know you, you regret saying post-construction, but I think that's really what we're, what we're talking about here. Do we not allow anything to change?
Okay, well that's-
I mean, I, I think that's what it's hinging on. And that's why I wanted to know why is this being brought up to us? Why did the town want us to put this in there? I don't know.
I, I can answer that. There was a request for a text amendment to the stormwater management ordinance. And the commissioners rejected that request for a text amendment. In a discussion, we talked about how there is not a variance procedure. So the board of commissioners, again, completely unrelated, you know, decided that it is, you know, it, it would be worth having this board's input as to whether it's, it's worth considering allowing for variances to the stormwater management ordinance.
Thank you. I mean, now I feel like I understand. Thank you.
Angie, has there been any requests for variances concerning, I mean, after hur- after the hurricane, has there been a lot of requests for variances on issues within people's property that they need? So, so there's not been an outpouring of people saying, my backyard now is a floodplain?
But if the availability isn't for variances, why would people bring it?
Cause people come down and ask stuff all the time. And then we say no.
So when you say completely unrelated, that confused me. Completely unrelated to the denial of a text change?
I, I think that's fair to say. I think that's fair to say.
Separate from it.
Right, right. It's, yeah, that, that was a, a specific-
It probably raised the question of whether, whether we should have the ability to apply variances.
I think, I think that's also fair to say.
Yeah. Brandon, the, the, in the, in the memo from Kayla, it reflects on stormwater regulations across Buncombe County. And I just want to confirm this. I think the language is pretty clear. But it says Buncombe County and all municipalities except for Bilt- Biltmore For- Biltmore Forest permit variances to their stormwater regulations. So, and clearly, well, I shouldn't say clearly because I don't know, but I suspect this has been in place for a while in, in other communities around us. And, and wasn't driven by Helane in part because there probably wouldn't have been enough time to take action for, for each of these other communities to do it. And I, and you all know, I already said that I, I'm conflicted on it. But I, just summarizing the discussion and please add in, you know, the, the board of commissioners has asked us to make a recommendation on this. And I, I think there's lots of debate and we've had a lot of really good discussion, but we do need to make a recommendation. I don't want to truncate any of the conversation or questions. And so we'll definitely ask for any, any final questions, but we do need to make a recommendation. So any, any other questions, any other comments that the group wants to make?
I, I have no problem with a variance. You know, I understand the reasons for it. I just want to make sure that it's tight enough that it doesn't put the board of adjustments in, in a problem. You, you read, you said there were some things that, when you were on the board before, that there were some things you had to consider. But apparently they're not in this. Are there certain phrases or conditions in other cases that the board has looked at that should be added to this? Or is, is this adequate?
I don't know. We, we, you found the, you found the six. It's, it sounded similar and I don't think there's really that much that this doesn't cover that's in those, the first six questions.
I, I would agree with that. And this is, this is maybe just a updated language and written by, you know, Professor Lovelady at the School of Government would be my guess. And he's, so if it's a little more concise, that, that is probably why. Yeah, I think there are a couple of things to keep in mind about how variances operate. First of all, a- as you mentioned, the, the burden is on the person bringing the variance. The other thing is if the board of adjustment does decide to grant a variance, the variance language allows for them to impose conditions necessary to protect the community. So it's, there, there are some tools.
Well, this does too, right?
The, the section recommended by staff, it's, it's got a, a letter B that says the town of Monterey may impose reasonable and appropriate conditions and safeguards upon any variance it grants. Yep. And that language is also recommended by the, the UNC School of Government. It's part of their model ordinance.
So I think this all really hinges on, like Mike was saying, before we didn't, you know, there was no reason to have any, any allowance for a variance. It's pre-cut and dried and nothing has happened, you know, you, you know the variances. Do we allow this language and then possibly open it up to the future for all sorts of things that the board of adjustments will have to deal with? You know, this, again, this is a once in a lifetime thing. That's kind of why I'm asking, has anybody really asked for, you know, a variance? Has anybody come in and talked about this? And if they haven't, then I don't see the need for, for this to, this, a variant, you know, to, to offer a variance. Now, you were saying Buncombe County does do that.
Well, so in the examples provided by, by Kayla, there, there's excerpts. And there's a statement that all municipalities in Buncombe County regulate stormwater. And then the next sentence is Buncombe County and all municipalities except for Biltmore Forest permit variances- to their stormwater regulations."
Okay, so that's a norm, other than Biltmore Forest?
Exactly. So, you know, not to say that Montreat does everything that all the other communities do, and Montreat is very unique, but it does point to, you know, that there are other communities that allow variances.
I just, what's coming to me is, I don't think people come forward with things that they don't think they have a chance to do.
They have a chance to do.
So, I don't think, nor do I think, and that could be historical as well. You know, I just thought that if you don't have that possibility, that people...
Then you just don't even try.
And as concerned as I am about the work of the Board of Adjustments, the two things I'm balancing are the good of the whole community and the good of the whole community, and those are the two things that for me are, I mean, I also am concerned that they would work night and day, but I also, those are the two things that seems to me are charged to balance. And I think as long as you've got restrictions that allow them to, A, reject or accept, and B, put conditions on it, it might make more work, but it also solves some problems. So, do we vote on this then?
I, well, I was just, I was going to ask again, are there any other comments, feedback, questions, concerns?
Just one thought I had, I think the person who would be in the best position to know how many of these requests were made is probably Kayla DeCristina, and she's not here, but that is who, you know, will probably get those initial questions.
It's that, I wasn't sure if she wasn't here just because it didn't work out, or if she was accusing herself from this, or...
She had a family emergency.
Oh, okay. I mean, I know they want a decision by the next council meeting. I don't know what our options are. I would kind of like to hear Kayla's opinion, you know, particularly since everything goes to her first.
That's a good point. Can we, can we table this? This was our one thing that we had to do, right?
I think, can I? I think it would be possible if Kayla gets back, we can see about maybe scheduling a special meeting for you all to discuss this again, if you'd like to wait until Kayla can be part of the discussion. I'm sure she can get something scheduled, and you can meet again before the next council meeting.
When is that council meeting?
The next council meeting is May 8th, I believe. Let me double check.
That's correct.
Yes, May 8th.
And could we do it virtually if that works out best?
No, no, we have to meet in person.
Okay.
Yep.
This is a tough one.
Well, I'm a new guy, but this is the board, Kayla's not the board.
Well, and I would note, certainly not speaking for Kayla on this, but she, she has actually spoken really through the memo.
I was going to say, I don't think it would be here if she wasn't...
Right, she's spoken, she's, the staff has provided the memo, and I, you know, just having worked with her for a couple of years, I think she's very careful to remain neutral and, you know, and to make recommendations through staff memorandum, and so I feel in some ways she's already spoken through the memo.
Good observation.
So, so if the commission is ready to vote, I think the options are to recommend to approve, and I'm speaking about the motion that would start this, a recommendation to, actually, let me look at the agenda.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Was this at the request of the Town Council?
The Board of Commissioners, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep. So, the Board of Commissioners request that this text amendment be drafted, I think it should have said, and presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so it may be placed on the Board of Commissioners' main meeting agenda. So, that's the request of the Board of Commissioners, and then they will vote, and we will make a recommendation, and they will make the decision.
So, they're, they're the ones that are going to make the decision, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so the, the motion we would make would be to recommend or not recommend, and then we would vote based on that.
All right.
All right. Do I have a motion?
A motion to recommend.
Do I have a second? Okay. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion unanimously passes.
We'll punt it back to them.
And just so Kayla does not get mad at me when she gets back, I did not see it in the memo, but if she was asking for a consistency statement, we reviewed the comprehensive plan. Could we entertain a vote on whether this would be consistent with that as well?
Sure. Let's have some dialogue about that. So, I'd recommend looking at the section of language. So, I in particular like the fact that it says it will secure public safety, you know, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, but will secure public safety and welfare. It is expressed throughout the comp plan, a view of concern about stormwater.
And preserve substantive justice.
Substantial justice, yeah. Yep.
I am in agreement with that. I think that that's a very important part without, like you said, getting too subjective as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned.
I'm going to check real quickly, I've got the comp plan open, I also wanted to look at the vision statement. All right, so, so seeking a motion to confirm that we believe that the recommendation is consistent with the Town Comprehensive Plan.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Can we, before we do that, this, the comprehensive plan talks a lot about containing and solely stormwater, you know, filtering and all of that. It says that that's in the, that's in the existing regulations, is that correct?
I, I can't tell you, it doesn't say that, Clay, I just can tell you in my reading, I don't recall any statement. To that effect.
The current stormwater control ordinance emphasizes diffuse and directed flow designs, backyard wetlands, and rain gardens, stormwater collection and refuse systems, vegetated swales, and removing impervious surfaces. If that's in the regulation, then I agree, it's in line with it, but I just didn't see that when I, I didn't read the entire stormwater regulation very carefully. So, as long as that's in the regulation like it claims, then I think we're fine.
Would you repeat the...
Yeah, it's, the current stormwater control ordinance emphasizes diffuse or directed flow designs, backyard wetlands, and rain gardens, stormwater collection, and refuse systems, things like that. So, as long as that is actually in the, in the stormwater control ordinance, then I would say they're in line with each other. I just want to make sure that that's actually in there.
I also don't feel, like, I just feel like that requires an understanding of the comprehensive plan, I don't have yet, so I feel uncomfortable saying, yeah, that's consistent. I don't know.
Is this something we have to have?
Again, I'm deferring to Kayla here. My...
What did she say about it? She said she wants a...
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to defer to you because I did not...
It's in the, if you would refer to the memo that she wrote, it is, so there's a page five of the memo, and it is above the web link. "In addition to recommending amended language, the Planning and Zoning Commission must also evaluate whether the amendment is or is not consistent with the Town's comprehensive So, I think it's, in some ways, it's, the amendment doesn't point to specific points in the Town, the comp plan, I think, part, and Clay, I don't know that I can answer or try to answer that question really quickly on whether the rest of the stormwater ordinance does reflect those items. I'm not sure that we're going to be equipped to determine that.
Yeah, because it's my understanding that if, if that language is in the ordinance, then that would be something that the Board of Adjustment would reference...
Yes.
As they did.
Yes.
So, as long as it's there, you know, and I assume if it's in the comprehensive plan, it's true. I just wanted to double check.
And in the past, when we've had to do the secure public safety and welfare, we have gone back to the comprehensive plan...
Okay.
And looked at it.
I don't, I can't do a search, I don't know if somebody's got a copy of the, of the stormwater ordinance, that they can just search rain gardens or something like that just to make sure it's there?
Yes, I see the list exactly, diffuse or directed flow designs, rain gardens, backyard wetlands, stormwater collection systems, and refuse.
So, it's there?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm, then I think we're covered there.
That's an excellent point. Okay.
I just don't, I don't always trust, you know, that things line up unless you see it.
Right, no, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, so I think we're back to the question of, we've had a motion to confirm that it is consistent with the comp plan, we've had a second, so it was Eleanor and Clay with the second. I did want to point out that there is an opportunity...
I think it was Mike with the second.
Yeah.
I think Mike was the second.
Oh, Mike was the second, I apologize, Mike was the second. And so then, we're going to move it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. I believe we had a unanimous vote of ayes. Brandon, are you good?
I abstained.
The bell has rung.
I abstained.
Oh, you abstained. Okay, so we had one abstention.
I'm not saying it's inconsistent.
Thank you.
I would ask for a ratification vote of the recommendation approving the ordinance. I think we might have, and my fault, I think we might have done that, the cart before the horse.
So, we should have done the comp plan first and then done the ordinance, the text amendment approval?
But I think ratifying the, you know, a simple motion ratifying the text amendment approval recommendation is sufficient.
I'll call for a motion to ratify the text amendment.
Second.
I think I need a motion first.
A motion to ratify the...
Ratify is kind of strong, Mike.
And the second.
I'm in. Yay, hey, yay.
Mike, are you the second?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm the second.
Okay, and we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? It passes unanimously. All right.
All right, well done.
We don't have a zoning administrator present, so we'll go ahead and skip updates and discussions. I want to remind everybody of our next meeting, July 17th at 10:30 a.m., and we will pause to see if there's any public comment. All right, here in on, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Cool. I will, can you, I will rescind it?
I seconded it, it works. Seconded it, seconded it.
Thank you for checking. I kind of was busy.
You did a great job.
Sorry, I should have asked about subcommittees, will we be contacted?
Well, yeah, so, great question, so I will work on organizing the meeting for the Hillside Development Committee, and then we'll have to wait on signs, because we're going to have another, we can't do it.
Okay.
So, that means Eleanor, Sally, I know that Kayla is available at the neighbors in May 8th, if you were wanting to look at that for nine.
8th, I think I'm back, I'm not here the first.
You're not, okay, so...
For this committee?
No, it'll say for the retirement schedule or something.
May 8th, I'm back.
May 8th, we have a meeting?
I think so.
It will be on 1/3.
I forget, I'm on signs and zoning?
You're on signs, and we can't do signs until the third number, so...
Okay.
So, we're saying in the FPM?
It'll be 1/3 PM, May 8th. Okay. We're Hillside, and what I will do is, you know, so that I can actually, you know, do this.
Here.
It would be in the conference room over there, which means Angie, you send out those documents first, and then I will work with Kayla to come around the, you know, what the work is coming down today, to...
Okay, great.
How we're doing.
And so, can I ask, just ask a question, kind of, if you refer to Hillside, refer to a particular areas being developed, or that it's actually developing on Hillside?
No, it's all around the ordinance is.
That's okay. Imagine Hillside is kind of, could be rolling away.
Yeah, I think.
So, for signs here?
We can't schedule signs.
I, I thought we were scheduling something at one...
I would have wanted to try to, but we can't, however, we...
But that's, that's signs, okay, I just wrote it down wrong.
No, I was hoping to get to, but we just waited, and so we'll wait, until we can...
I just...
No, it's really awful, it's really awful. It looks like it's, I think it's a little over.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah. I think I don't want to be...
Is this okay?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
Yeah. Lots of commitments, I think, what's going on?
No worries, I just want to make sure we're...
No, we're not doing much, no. Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming back to us, Kayla, that we got through it, and, yeah, and I don't know.
So, what do you need from A's?
I'm going to, I'm going to, you're going to be chief, thank you. I'm going to ask Kayla to send the work that's coming down today, but then I do want to...